Work session items, we have any public comments on work session related items? Seeing none. Annual RRC board and commission? You're up.
I'm Kyle Story, part of the planning department here in the county as well as the city zoning ministry. Before you is a redevelopment ready community presentation outlining the different things including explanation of the program, specific roles of different entities, redevelopment sites, and finally a facilitating discussion afterwards. The program info and objectives include it's a statewide organization, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which works to develop and facilitate growth of vibrant communities all in the state. The organizational structure includes updating forums, making the website user friendly for developers and interested parties with more information. The zoning process with this program includes streamlining the process, making it easier for developers to come into the community and facilitate the growth that we're interested in. Site identification regarding this program includes showcasing and defining specific areas within the community that needs redevelopment. The two images on this slide showcase the stepwise format that we use for the marijuana facilities, sales overlay district, including the step-by-step guide for developers to know exactly where they were in the process while the department communicated that throughout. The bottom graphic showcases a site plan which is used in the zoning process to help decide what's available and what's allowable on the parcel. So, the different roles include the planning department, the DDA, city planning commission, city council, land bank authority, and the chamber of commerce. Those roles will be delved into in the next few slides. The planning department and zoning administration role is to provide technical assistance. Some of the images showcased on this slide outline some of the capabilities of the department including area maps, zoning maps, different parcel requirements and things. Application forms come into the planning department which have zoning approval. If necessary, they go to the planning commission of course. And finally, the planning department and zoning admin helps facilitate communication between the department and the different jurisdictional agents to developers and other interested parties for their projects. The planning commission effectively approves many different site-specific approvals. Some of those are showcased on the image in front of you including specialty use permits and site plans and parcel splits, things like that. The planning commission sees these things once a month and is available to answer any questions and help with the development process as well. City council dictates direction for the site, ensures available resources, brings a knowledge and awareness of the program as well as the benefits and promotes the community as an affiliated RRC body. The DDA offers incentives and provides recommendations for different development proposals and future opportunities in the downtown development, the downtown district. There are a few more slides, those showcase the different, maybe it'll take a second to load or something. The following slide showcase the different parcels that were up for discussion tonight. So, that being said, I guess I can look on the flash drive a little bit further, I'm not sure why they're not exactly showing up but... Regardless, there are twelve sites that have been prioritized. Those include everything from River Street to others around Water Street and such. Slide six, I think, would be the, where it starts. Okay, here we are. So, the land bank is another entity which role includes securing properties for redevelopment. There aren't many parcels in the land bank currently though. This entity can be a very vital tool for different development around the city, which is something that the planning department thinks possibly could be expanded. So, the following are different property cards and RRC potential redevelopment sites. I'm not sure if the council during this work session would like to wait to discuss the sites at the end of the presentation or if we'd like to discuss them as they, as we go. Regardless, like I said, there's two or so different property cards that will be in front of us.
Anybody have any preference?
We could wait till the end.
Wait till the end, I guess.
Great. So, these are all zone different mediums. For example, the image and graphic on the right, two hundred River Street is in the peninsula district. It's a very large parcel, huge waterfront opportunity compared to the one on the left which is in a different zone and a totally different acreage and state equalized value. All these cards showcase different property descriptions, legal descriptions as well as the state equalized value tax will be ownership and things like that. These are helpful in the RRC process for developers coming into the community. There was a slide that I'm not sure if it's missed or... But, the chamber of commerce also has a distinct role in this process including promoting and marketing the different sites to developers and being the lead in the marketing of the different sites. So, all those different entities we talked to about earlier are very important. So, these are the eventual property cards that come into fruition when a developer is contacted by the chamber of commerce for potential redevelopment. Other sites include Ninth Street as well as another River Street. River Street has quite a few different parcels which are located surely in the DDA which the previous slides showcased the roles of those entities. So, there's a lot of waterfront potential around town which is exciting for potential redevelopment. More River Street parcels. It would be really great if these were redeveloped, surely the downtown could use it of course. So, that kind of goes over the different sites that we have been prioritized by Project Rising Tide and things before. So, I'm wondering if now would be a good time for the city council to discuss any of the sites that were discussed now or would like to see future work on.
Anybody want?
I'm just curious about the city properties that we have for sale, why they're not included in any of these or are they? I don't really see any.
This is what, the information that was passed down to me since taking over the RRC about a couple of weeks ago now, maybe a month or so. So, this is what's been presented regarding those sites. What specifically are you talking about, I guess?
Well, we have a number of vacant pieces of land that are for sale.
Alright.
The city owns.
This program is basically focused on redevelopment of commercial properties and industrial properties as opposed to...
They have structure on it is what I'm hearing you really say, right?
Well, not, not exactly. It can be marketed like our Renaissance, former Renaissance Park. That's marketed but it's marketed through another, it's through the MEDC in another program. But, we're not marketing our residential properties through this program or the other one. That's, that's being handled by a real estate agent.
Did you have any specific parcels in mind that I could potentially write down and get back with you on?
No, I think that sort of covered it. Just, I, I would just, here's my take on it. The more places we can get it out there, the more chances we have of actually getting it. So, rather than pigeonholing this kind of property one way and this kind of property another way, I think it's just better if we can have that more broad coverage. That's my take on it.
Kyle, can, do you have a list of some of the properties that were on that list a year or so ago that have fallen off? Because I noticed that there were a number of different ones that were on the previous list. Could you go over some of them?
All the data that was given to me has been, is on a flash drive that I haven't had too much time to synthesize and go over in depth. But, your question would be regarding previous lists, if those sites...
Well, for example, I think the National Bank, the Manistee County Bank building was on that list at one time. The Hotel Northern was on the list and I think there's a couple others. And I, and I think they've been, I think they're in some process, Iron Works is another.
Iron Works, I think Glick's was on that, on that before.
Exactly.
And we've, so we've had to, staff has had to take a look at, you know, what have we had before, what's off, what are we, you know, backfilling them with.
Right, and, and I'm just kind of interested in addressing what, where those other properties have, what's happened with those other properties.
A few of, excuse me, a few of the properties, Rob Carson, county planning director, were identified as not being for sale. The owners not willing to sell at the time, so those were removed when Lizette and I started synthesizing that list back in February or March last winter. What we foresee going forward, because this is the, technically the two thousand and nineteen list. So, what we would like to do is get the criteria for RRC formally laid out in a sheet that we can hand out to the council, the planning commission, the DDA, the Brownfield Authority, and have each of those individual bodies then provide us with their wish list of sites to be included in RRC. Then through a work session with the city planning commission, pare that list down to the sites that should be made into the future property cards for two thousand and twenty. So, I think that's where we're moving forward right now. This is more of a review of the existing sites, get your comments and feedback on what was existing from two thousand and nineteen that should continue to be brought forward for the RRC program. And then, we want to reach back out and generate additional sites. Linda, if there's specific sites the city of Manistee would like included, any other sites around town? One thing that we did find was when the previous sites were assembled for the RRC list, some of those sites are not available for sale. And so, when we're putting together these property cards and we're marketing materials for buildings or properties that aren't technically for sale, we need, we need to do better than that. We need to make sure that we're speaking to the property owners, they are open to selling their property if we're going to actually market it. Because it would be, it would be, you know, terrible if we had a developer come to town to specifically look at a site and then we meet with the property owner and say, well, this building is not for sale. And we've just wasted someone's time and, and it just would not be appropriate to go in that manner. So, we're gonna work on trying to ensure that everything that makes it onto the list, there's communication between the property owners and staff and that we're well aware of what the status of those sites are. So, we know that these that were included for two thousand and nineteen are available.
Can you include those from last year that we came up with, all the sites that were around?
Yeah, so, and some of them that were asked to be included, the House of Flavors was placed on, suggested to be placed on the list. Well, House of Flavors technically was not for sale at the time. The PNC Bank, which is now sold, was removed as, from what I'm aware of. And there was a couple there, I can't remember off the top of my head, but a couple of the others were removed as well because they were either sold or they were no longer for sale. But now, there are some other buildings I know that have become available, I think in the last six months, that are not included here on this list, so we need to make sure we capture those.
And, and you've got one on the list that is currently for sale that I, that I saw that you might not be aware of.
Okay.
And that is the Music Vault.
Yes, that is for sale, isn't it? Okay.
So...
There is some limitations for the RRC site. You know, we can generate or compile a rather lengthy list and put together, it comes down to it on the state's website. There are only really marketing like three to five of the sites are actually up on the website readily available for developers and the public to view. But, we want to capture everything so we have all that in our back pocket and available.
So, are you asking for suggestions now to be added or just to go over what you have here?
It's, if you, if you feel comfortable in being able to provide suggestions this evening for us. If you need more time, if you want to provide some now and then, continue to discuss and provide us with more ideas, you know, at a later date, that's fine. It's, it's completely up to you. We're more than willing to take any suggestions that you have right now.
Do you know if there's anything going on with the, I think it was an old gas station on the corner of Thirty-one and River Street?
I'm aware that, that property owner was doing significant work to the structure to try to accommodate some sort of retail business. At this time, I know there was some other ongoing discussion with other developers. I'm not currently aware of what that situation is right now. But, that site specifically was not included because it was that individual bought it, Marty Spalding owns it, and he was retrofitting it for a retail establishment. As my, let's see, my latest conversation with him was about a month and a half ago and it was still on course for, he did not, he did not technically have it for sale or he was in discussion with someone privately regarding that. So, that's why it was removed.
Yeah, because he was gonna, he was working on some building down on River Street and he was gonna develop that into a sandwich shop.
Yes, he was looking at like drive-through beer pickup and sandwiches and stuff like that or something along those lines.
I'm trying to think of the street. First Street, the big brown building, the watch repair garage.
First and...
First and Cedar? Cedar, maybe, yeah. Yeah, big brown building. Yep. That's actually, I see a for sale sign on it, so... I don't know how marketable it is, but...
I think it's both storage.
Anything's marketable to the right developer.
Well, there's a for sale sign, I've been trying to sell it and you've got story to it.
So, is, is the, the consumer's lot, is that actually for sale now or is that still in the speculation?
That is a speculation lot as far as I'm aware. I think we need to have some conversation with consumer energy prior to including that in the two thousand and twenty list.
Any other questions? Buildings, concerns?
What about the building on Sibin and Fourth? It was like a bookstore? It was Third, it's like...
Sibin and Third, there was a, they're working through the process of, of the zoning ordinance amendment for an assembly operation was recommended by the planning commission to city council, which will get on agenda as soon as possible.
Okay, so, something going on with that?
Eventually.
Okay.
Are you looking at putting any of these homes into the land bank at all?
I think that would be a great idea. It's not something I'm, I'm not...
Yeah, so, for, for homes to go into the land bank, they would either, they would need to be there foreclosed on.
Right.
I don't foresee the land bank turning down property, but I think that would be an appropriate conversation to have with them. And that is definitely someone will be approaching concerning the RRC sites. We've been attending their meetings.
Yep. Anything else? Do you have anything else?
No, there, nothing.
I guess we're done. We have something else, I guess we're done.
We'll be bringing you in a updated list once we compile all of the input from the other boards within the community. And then, the planning commission will have work ahead of them and thoroughly reviewing all of the sites and we'll begin working with the chamber on new property cards.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the list, discussion on DDA TIP plan. I believe Ms. Beaton wanted that on?
Yes, I did. Thought it would be appropriate if we talked about it some more. Two people in the audience that want to talk about it.
Live and breathe it. I guess I got three quick points to throw out there from the last work session. That the TIP plan that you have in front of you is the same TIP plan that we had before that was approved by the DDA board to pass on to you.
That's the one from eleven twenty-six meeting that we had?
Yes.
Okay. I have a copy of it.
The Westshore Community College did approach us afterwards and said, as soon as we have our funding in place, they're ready to go. They want to put the contracts in place and they're hoping to put their shovels in early winter next year. So, whenever we have our TIP plan and want to put all of it together, they're ready for that step. The additional document...
By funding, what, what is Westshore waiting for funding from the DDA for?
Clarify.
I thought that's what you just said, they...
Yeah.
So, in the TIP plan, we have funds allocated for that. They don't want to start the project without knowing a hundred percent that our funds are gonna go towards that project. But, they are ready to take that step as soon as our TIP plans are approved, our funds can be allocated.
There's, there's DDA money for the facade of the building.
Right, and we had a discussion about that and I thought the discussion went that afternoon. You found out that it wasn't feasible for the DDA to borrow the money to redo the facade front on the...
There was, there was a couple issues in, in discussions with the bond, bond council. He, number one, he doesn't think any facade grants are really legal even though they're done throughout the state. But, he's really worried about going out and bonding for a facade improvement. And he would not be in a position to sign off as an, you know, as our bond council to do that. So, we, we had a number of people on the, on the conference call. Caitlin was on it, myself, Ed, college, bond council, and we brainstormed on how we can make this happen. So, what we've, what we've focused on and it still has to be discussed at the DDA board, but an option would be for the DDA to lease the parking lot behind Glick's. And then, would that lease payment would then go out X number of years and repay the college for the extra work that they're doing there.
Okay, that's, that's how I thought it was gonna be. And I, the way that Caitlin had explained it sounded a little bit different, so I want, I just need clarification on that. So, that number that they have in the TIP plan just represents basically...
Funding.
A ballpark figure for what our lease agreement's gonna be for twenty-five years.
It went in initially as a facade grant because that's when we, when the DDA board approved it. That's what our understanding was. It was changed after this was adopted. So, basically, it's just a placeholder that can be redefined in, in the plan.
Okay.
Yep, I apologize. The new comment was their timeline was changing. They were upping the time in which they would want to do the project.
The gap was for how much?
I think we have two hundred and fifty allocated in the TIP plan for the Riverwalk Plaza space and then we have five hundred thousand...
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred. Yeah.
...allocated for the facade of both sides of the River Street and, what is this? Maple, Maple Street facades.
Now, there, would there be any issue with the Riverwalk development portion?
No, because that's not a facade grant and we would not be bonding for that.
We've kept that separate from everything else.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. But, you know, that said, if we needed to bond for it, you know, I don't think the bond council would have any issues with it. As an example, if we wanted to take a number of the projects that's in the DDA TIP plan and want to get them over and done with right away, we could conceivably bond and wouldn't have the same concerns as it would be for a facade grant.
Now, I guess part A of that original TIP plan, and I had mentioned this to Thad right after our last work session and he had recommended I write a memo. We had originally two deadlines for December thirty-first for this TIP plan. And I made some phone calls. It was for both RRC certification and both for, and then for PA fifty-seven for reporting for the Department of Treasury. P, RRC certification is willing to be a little bit more flexible with us. The TIP plan is the only thing we have left to turn in for them. The Department of Treasury is willing to zomify our current TIP plan so that we're still operating legally during this process, but they, they are nervous about it and would like to see it as soon as possible. We, as the staff and myself, are figuring out what that process kind of looks like. Do we have to have the public hearings afterwards, the, what does the paperwork portion look like? Sent out a couple emails today and I hadn't heard a response back before today's work session to have something specific to read off, but I'm gonna be forwarding that information to you as soon as I get it. That way, we all have a better understanding of how this process is finalized, both on our end and at the state level. And in addition to that is the city master contract. We went back and forth and we have something that we like now where it's more service oriented as opposed to project oriented. We have an amount in there and it increases per the state interest rate between zero to three percent. And it's kind of covers the all, overall appreciation that we have for the city services that are done within the DDA district. And those are the three points. I just wanted to throw out there real quick if you had any questions between the last work session and this one on those.
Well, tonight's the first time we've gotten a chance to take a look at it. It was in our folders when we got here. I did take a look at it. It, it, it reads a lot, it reads, it's friend, it's a friendly read. Does that make any sense to you Karen? I mean, it's, it's more conversational. I, I like the approach that it was, that it took on here. I, I know you're absolutely right, you cannot pinpoint the projects. You can't define them perfectly, so it needs to be an understanding. I like the sixty-five thousand dollars. I even like the point zero five cent per copy. I mean, you, you put some things in here that weren't obvious before as far as usage goes.
This has already been taken to your turn, right? It's already been through the attorney. We were supposed to have a meeting and couldn't get it together. I know at least two out of the three committee members are like, this is great, let's move on. So, it'll go to the full board tomorrow.
Okay.
Hoping, and it's my expectation, that it'll be approved.
Okay, that would be great.
It was just based on our last conversation, which was more of a conversation instead of, you know, this is the task, this is the staff task. And I think Ed brought up, you know, the whole three different categories and it just kind of all flowed together. So, I, I'm, I'm very pleased with it. I think it's a very workable document.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good to me.
So, the board hasn't seen this yet? It's only to the committee?
Only to the committee first. I didn't want to wait again, so it hasn't been to the board yet. It'll be to the board tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Yeah. And the recommendation is they accept it.
I do like the collaboration, how everything flows and agree with it all.
So, first of all, the comment, I just think that is a good document. I am not privy to what it was before other than the conversations about some of the challenges between being open enough to be able to allow for the unknown and being specific enough to, to have some meat from the DDA's perspective on what was expected. And I think you've got a pretty good compromise here. The other was on page thirteen, is that verbiage going to be changed then under six hundred thousand from? Because it's still, in, in my copy, it says funds for facade enhancements of the downtown Westshore Community College building. That's now going to be converted into leasing, parking lot space?
The recommendation that we kind of had in that phone conversation was they're not overly concerned about those specifics. They appreciate that we're indicating the allocation for the funds, but the detail orients of it is a separate contract.
And, you know, and again, you know, the TIP is just like everything else, it's kind of this fluid thing. So, if we hit up against that and we have to be creative and start to do this lease process, it'll come back and we'll be saying this is what's...
Oh, okay. I, I didn't know if that was already a foregone conclusion, so we would just amend the language.
Right, the amount. Right, the amount's the same, it's just how that process is going to happen. Once it's figured out, then we just would say, the process is going to change, but this is the same amount, we're not going to go over that.
Okay.
Was that your understanding of it?
Yeah, and, and I think we all are of the same opinion that this is a twenty-five year plan and things are going to change. You know, and we, this gives us a framework of projects as well as a budget and think, and, and we have to change when we need to.
How about the agreement with the Chamber on Economic Development, where are we with that Karen?
I just said that. I have a, I don't, I, I don't think we've ever shared it with anyone else. But we have a outline in which there are specific properties in the DDA district that we want to be focused on regards to large economic development. We feel strongly that Caitlin has the ability to kind of handle the small business stuff and what's going on on River Street. The development process, we are recommending that it goes to the Chamber, not the Chamber, the Economic Development Council?
Corporation, right.
Corporation, I don't know the acronyms yet. But we, that recommendation is going to the full board. It's kind of interesting because some of the things that they just, some of the buildings that they identified are the same ones we're tagging and saying, we need something done with that building, we need something done, it's the ones that fall in the DDA district. We are very close. You know, I've thrown out, they've thrown out an amount, you know, that they would like to see paid. I've countered it, you know, kind of trying to meet the halfway mark. I, I'm proposing a year contract, I wanted it to start in January. It probably will be approved at our first January meeting. They're going to review it tomorrow with all my recommendations on it. I'm also recommending that it be looked at as like this document, we can't be, we can't be very specific and detailed on exacts. We have to allow, I want to encourage allowing Caitlin to take her role as the director to set up meetings with like the Economic Development Director and set up what are the outcomes, what are, what is the expectation, what does economic developments? Are you going to make contacts on these three people? So those kind of specifics, I think is something a director should do, and that's part of contract management. So that document got sent to the board along with my little spiel. I can't make that meeting tomorrow, so I'm hoping that they will digest that and we can vote on it hopefully the first part of January. The other thing that is also in the recommendation is that we can also partner up with the father township DDA. I think it's important that we reach out to them. They're doing placemaking, which, you know, we could do that kind of stuff. If there's something that they can bring in and we can take along with that, I think that would be a nice relationship there. If we want them to work for us in doing some sort of small business plan development, I think that could be a contract issue as well. Here's your hourly rate and we will pay you for this many hours of your time to do this plan for us. And again, that would be our director doing contract management. So that's, that's the way I'm going at it and proposing to the rest of the board.
What do you mean by placemaking?
They're, they did a, like a trail area, it's the greenery that you put within your community. It's the appealing things that families will move to this area if there's a, a nice playground.
Land or stuff.
Yeah, it's just making visually, you know, usable, but also visually appealing to people.
Has there been, I think I heard you saying there have been conversations with the Chamber as far as?
Uh, yes, I, um, we were, we were supposed to have a meeting and, and it, um, some of our, my committee members weren't able to make it. And I forgot to tell the, the Chamber that, so they were waiting. So I decided to go over there and we looked at the contract. We're, we were pretty in sync with what it is. There was, there was a large section in there that, that I agreed to take out. And I told the rest of the board that I think it's important because those were placemaking duties. And that's not economic development, that's a part of bringing people in, but not economic development. So we removed that piece and the rest of it, we agreed on. You know, except the amount, they wanted a little bit more and I'm kind of in the middle.
I worry sometimes that we're going to be having a lot of different people, organizations, or groups working on economic development. And I look in the past and I remember sometimes we have three or four different groups working on economic development, and how did that work for us?
Yeah.
I think, I think we need to get under one, one group, work them to death, get our dollars worth, and make something happen. That's just my opinion.
I, I agree with you, I think that, you know, having one person over that and then going in a direction and then bringing everybody else with them is a great idea. That's why I'm, I, I recommend that we, I'm going to make that recommendation that we do that. The other thing is that Caitlin has some very strong skills, she has a lot of knowledge and an ability. And she, we need to put her as our, our director. I'm just kind of used to directors being also contract managers.
Yeah, that doesn't exclude her from working with, or working with the Chamber or?
Right, no, we, you know, and, and some of the things that, you know, I've said in that, um, my little spiel to the, to the committee tomorrow is that, you know, Caitlin has a great sense of, of our community down on River Street, you know, she can continue to be involved. I'd like to see the collaboration with her and the Economic Development Director. They're doing, you know, retention visits, well, let's do it together, or, you know, let's tag team on this. If Caitlin sees something in small business area that, you know, someone, one of our businesses wants to expand or do something, she can have a consultation with their Economic Development Director, but she's very capable of handling that. While our Economic Development Director is, you know, working on, oh, uh, I, I called them by their old names, he wants addresses on the contract, but like the old cheese factory over by the senior center that's been sitting Jones's building, you know. I'd rather see him spending all his time because that's going to be about, that, that, that will probably be over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of man, you know, processing and development. And that's one of the things we did put in the contract, there's like seven buildings in our district, seven or eight buildings in the district that, that we are really saying it's going to cost over seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to bring these buildings online. So here, economic development, you can do that.
In reference to your document, I'm, this makes me very happy. This, it's talking about the city services in downtown, the very last paragraph. This list is not inclusive, as there are numerous items that are just managed by the city? I think that's leaving it open-ended, things will get done in our downtown, it'll be nice, I think it's a real good-
You're right, that was the conversation we had, this, I can't take credit for this final draft, this was done by an attorney with Ed. Oh, Ed. Yeah, it, what we did was we put together a, a conversation, you know, I put all the stuff of, of our conversation together. And then when we presented it, he put it in a much better format. So, you know, it just really came down to, and then we had a real honest conversation, I really appreciated it with Ed and, and Jeff McCula, you know, about, it's got, it's to a point we've got to trust each other. And so, you know, I've said here many a times, I'm willing to do that, so that's why I'm just pushing this stuff through. I think that we can work better together than separately.
Caitlin, you worked with those downtown people, what is Rosemarix doing? I mean, they've been putting boards on the windows, they got a board across it all the time, are they doing any side, getting inside?
Just getting more boards up. Actually, there has been some improvement, I mean, you know, they, they-
Really?
They, they, the entryway on that Rosemarix building, they're a little bit more there. So I don't know if that, the notices have shook them up a little bit or?
I mean, how long has it been going on?
Well, their permit, that's going to expire soon, isn't it? Didn't they? I don't know, I don't know when it expires. They have a time limit, I know. I know that, but I don't know the date, that came through the Historic District Commission.
I think it might have been in June.
Yeah, I, I asked the question and there's no, there's no teeth, so when it expires, it's like, huh?
Well, at that point, they don't have a note as far as issuing a ticket for not complying or filing an ordinance. There, there are some options and I think we'll be a little bit better positioned after the first of the year when we take over building official duties. And we can look at it through, through the lens of the building official and permitting.
Well, do we have anything under the ordinance?
If it's not blighted, if it's not considered a blight, we don't.
Well, I'm on the ordinance committee, I'm going to bring it up because I think that's ridiculous that they're wasting all this time on this building. Too long enough, they've had enough, six months, six months, six months all the time and they do nothing.
I, I'm right there with you. From day one when I got out of the DDA, it's like, what is going on with this building? And to find out it was the Historic District that is giving this permit and continuing it.
Then we would need to talk to the Historic District and, and jump on their ass.
Well, they were told they're not going to get another permit.
Right.
They're not going to be extended, this is it.
You sent a letter too saying-
This is the final, this is their final-
I heard that last year though, I heard that they weren't going to get, not with, they got it again.
Well, it's, it, it was approved last year, it only lasts till, I think, this June, and then there's nothing after that. We did?
No, Historic.
Historic District did, yeah.
Extended it.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be there to talk to them.
Good, good.
Because that's ridiculous.
Wow, I, I agree, it's two buildings on River Street that they are-
Three, the old, that one?
Two next door and then one down on the other block.
Rosemarix.
Next to the parking lot.
They all look alike, I mean, you guys, they're consistent.
They're all boarded up.
No waste of paint.
No, no.
Not a drop of-
All the same color, plywood brown. Anybody else? Anything else?
Uh, just a quick question for Caitlin. You talked to the Department of Treasury, right? Do they expect you to be fully compliant on your website by the end of this month?
Yes.
Did you, okay, are you going to be?
Yes.
I'll look at it and I think we're still missing a few things.
I don't have an issue uploading things to the website now, looking promotional and marketing oriented, it's a working progress.
There are, um, there are rules in regards to meetings being posted on websites.
Which connects to the city website.
Yeah, so do we have all our current meetings and every meeting that we've had?
Caitlin.
Those are the items I was looking at where I believe we have to be compliant by the end of this month. On our website, on your website, the DDA.
Annual report, website, those are things that are done by the end of the year. But I've been posting with Travis, he communicated with them.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yep. Well, I don't know how thoroughly the state will look at that, but if they, if they decide that you're not compliant, they'll send you a letter and, and you have to become compliant within sixty days, otherwise the funding stops. They have a process that makes that stop, you know, through a taxing authority.
Why it was really important to let them know that we wouldn't have a TIF plan by the December thirty-first deadline.
One of the, when I read the requirements, I believed that council is responsible to make sure that that is done. If you don't do it, we got to.
Correct.
So please get it done.
Thank you. It's in your, you have it. So you just let us know.
Thank you, anything else? Okay, I just have a quick thing, I was at revenue sharing. The City of Manistee received two grants last night. One for the police department, five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, and one for the fire of seven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. A total of twelve thousand seven hundred and ten dollars for the city. Last night was distributed ninety-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents for public safety grants. There was just shy of a million dollars distributed throughout the county for colleges, schools. You have any questions, would like to read my material, I'm more than happy to present it. Anybody have anything other? Just wanted to add that Jeff had a meeting with our insurance adjuster this afternoon. I wasn't able to attend, but he did send me a, an email that he thought it went really well. And he was, they, they were up here to review our most recent damage on the Riverwalk. He was going to pitch to them that while they don't protect the shoreline per se, that perhaps they needed to start thinking about protecting the Riverwalk with either sheet piling or riprap so they don't have to continually replace our Riverwalk. And that, if they did that, would in turn protect the, the shoreline. So I've got to get with him in the morning to find out exactly the, the details of it, but he, he felt it went really well. So we're, you know, we're doing that, we have a meeting scheduled for the twentieth of this month with the Army Corps of Engineer to talk about their study that they did a number of years ago when they were putting up the sheet piling along the north part of the channel down by the Coast Guard Station. And we had a meeting this afternoon with, with Spicer and Spicer Group, myself, Jeff and Ed. And we were taking a look at that wave study. And right where it says that the waves are going to be redirected is exactly where we're experiencing our major shoreline erosion problems. So that'll be an interesting discussion because their, their own study that we have a copy of shows what's going to happen. So we're going to ask them how they're going to correct it. So we're making some progress, we're also, our plan is to come back during the budget process with some ideas on how, how, I guess, communicate to council how important it is going forward that we protect that shoreline along, along there and give council some options on how we can fund that. Because it's my position that if we do, don't do something in twenty twenty, it's, we're going to have a lot worse problems. Because everybody's saying that the water's going to go up another foot. And that's just going to magnify the impact of the, of the waves and it's, it's just going to get out of hand. So it'll be an interesting conversation to have with council on the magnitude of our problem and how are we going to pay for all of that. Any update on the first street pier, the, by the beach? Other than we've turned all that information to the Army Corps of Engineers because it is theirs, I don't know what they're going to do with it. The only thing I know is that they did a temporary fix last year and it didn't work. So, and what we've heard from the Corps is for them to get a project approved, it's a multi, I mean, many years out. So I don't know what they're going to do with the interim. We're going to, they're, my understanding is when they're here on the twentieth, they're also going to take a look at that for themselves and maybe we'll have a little bit better idea.
That piece that fell into the river, was that the new piece of the Riverwalk or was it?
Ed, do you know if that was the new replacement piece of the Riverwalk?
Part, but it looked like it was the next section too.
Yeah.
Okay, and where are we at with doing the declared disaster for the city with the council?
Oh, the resolution?
Yeah.
That's going to be on council's agenda next meeting. And then, I don't know if I shared with council, but at, when Representative O'Malley was here for his last office hours, he's keenly, keenly aware of, at least in his district, the magnitude of the shoreline erosion problem. And he, what he told us was that he was going to assemble, he called it a task force of state representatives whose district includes the shorelines and try to come up with some mitigation plan that they, that will help these communities take care of their problems. So I thought that-
Did you have them from the Corps to look at it or did you just send them pictures?
We sent them pictures and then we, we are meeting with the Corps on the twentieth. And according to Jeff, they were, they were also going to, after our meeting, go down and take a look at it. But we've got it blocked off, so it's, I mean, obviously, people can go around and, if they want to, but we've done what we can to keep people from going out on that break wall. That's all I had. Anything else?
Well, yeah, Ed, a while back I asked about, and I asked the chief that. Are we putting on, going to hire another guy, being we're down two men now, we got Pefri's gone, Raoul's been off. And I recommended hiring another guy.
When I had, I had the chief look at the budget with Ed and we don't have the monies to hire it without going over budget.
But don't we have money from Pefri when he left?
Right, but in terms of, with that arbitration award and the overtime we've been expending to, to cover, we don't have the monies. we don't have the monies, we brought Shands back from the drug team to work, uh, to work the road, and we thought that was covering it, and then Ra, you know, we had, uh, an officer go out and extended sick leave.
Are we putting somebody back into the scent, because I've heard that?
Not at this, not at this time, we just don't have the personnel to do it right now. So we've got a, you know, these are all gonna be dis, budget discussions, but in this current budget year, with the money that was allocated to the police department, we can't hire another person.
So how are we handling that with two men down the mountain?
Well, we're sometimes going with one person on a shift, and sometimes we have to expend some overtime.
How was this weekend, was there any?
In, uh, in talking with the Public Safety Director today, he thought it went very well. I think it got, he indicated it got a little hectic during the parade because Murphy's Law kicks in, we had a lot of calls, you know, so they had to shuffle people around, but certainly having the, uh, posse from the Clare County Sheriff's Department helped. Yeah, but it, it went smooth.
What are we gonna do with the people saying that everybody's getting burned out working all the hours and all that?
Well, I I don't have, I don't have the right answer for you right now, I, I.
I'm throwing it out to you if that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, some of it is the fact that the award that we have to, that we have to live, live with requires some extra work for the officers, sometimes it's filled, sometimes it isn't, we got additional unexpected costs in our award. They, they, they could get burnt out.
Does that put us in jeopardy though, having one guy on?
It de, it depends.
I mean, you get one guy and something happens, right?
I know, that's why we have mutual aid agreements, we got people to ban, the county, the tribe, the state, to help us out.
Has that been working pretty well?
I haven't heard that it hasn't been, the chief has not indicated any concerns with that. About not getting backup.
From the county, we, we hear good things, meaning they're working really well.
Also, you have two state troopers now located in our area, which has gotta help.
Well, they've been here a long time.
Yeah.
Anything else? Roger.